Thank you. Is this working? Yep, thank you. Let's call this meeting to order. The Board of Education special meeting to order. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance. Exactly. Thank you so much. I wanted to, there is one, two, three, four, five of us here. Am I counting right? Yes. We have Laura Costin online and Michael Joseph will be joining shortly. Unfortunately, Ms. Kowalski can't make it tonight. So, but we moved us up early so, because we have a real robust agenda and some, some things that we had to do a lot of deep diving on. So I will get right to it. So with that, the curriculum plan review cycle, Dr. Cara Villo and Mr. D'Amico. We listened to this video. This was the shorter one, the 34-minute one.
We warned you.
I was less enthused about, I have to be honest. Okay. So, do you have anything you want to say or we just dive it in? And Laura, I'm just going to keep looking up at you when you have a question.
Do I have to hold it down?
Nope.
Anyone? Joe, go, Joe.
Well, I'll start because I have the most remedial of questions. So basically, I've been listening, or we have been listening for some time now to the public making comments about curriculum, about items that are approved, that are unapproved, things that might be in it, some things that might not be in it. So basically, I want to kind of bring it down to the most rudimentary levels. Now, when people say curriculum is not approved, do we have a history of every approved curriculum and every Board of Education that might have approved that curriculum? Where basically, say there's some way of doing push-ups in gym and that was approved 25 years ago and that has not changed. Do we have a Board of Ed meeting that says that the curriculum for push-ups was approved in 1964 at this meeting? Do such things exist?
I wasn't alive in 1964, so I can't tell you exactly what happened in 1964. But what I, what you're referring to are standards. And the standards are set down from the state. That's what's approved by the Board of Education, that we're going to adopt the state and national standards in a particular content area. Then it's up to the local school board to be advised by the deputy superintendent, this is superintendent curriculum, the curriculum coordinators on how we're going to actually take those standards and make them meaningful in terms of learning outcomes and developing learning plans. So curriculum is a very broad, it's a philosophical term. People throw around curriculum all the time. And, and I've often heard people say, well, the board should approve all curricular materials. Well, let's talk about what that would mean. So curricular materials could mean every single teacher's daily lesson plans. Now, we have over 900 teachers and they write lesson plans every single day. I don't think it's within the purview of the board, or I don't think it, I don't think the board even wants to engage in having to work 24/7 to look at every single teacher's daily lesson plans and say, yes, these are board-approved. So the board approves on a higher level, like on a 10,000-foot view. You look at the standards identified either at the state or national level. We look at the frameworks to which we are supposed to teach those standards. And then our job is to fill in the learning outcomes based on developmentally appropriate lesson plans and provide teachers with the curricular resources to get to the standards. Is that helpful?
In a way, a little, for me, a little too much education ease, if you know what I mean. Sort of kind of bring it down to a level where may, basically, maybe. Well, like I remember, I remember back not too long ago, we had Black and Latino studies as a curriculum item which we had to approve. And that was kind of specific. We went over the, what was involved there. And it sort of covered a lot of stuff, of course, not the daily plans, the, the, these plans teachers had to put forward, had to, had to work on. But it was basically just in general what it was. I, I think back to, I believe there was some time ago, didn't we approve a yoga curriculum? Wasn't that something we talked about as a new course or is that, that's different?
That was a new course, new course.
So can you explain how the new course and us approving a new course versus us approving a curriculum item would be, how that would be different? Just sort of, but let me, let me say this again. This is because I, I listen to our community when they, when they ask questions. And unfortunately, the way we're structured here, well, we can't answer them. We're here to listen to what they say. And I feel that our, our community's not really being answered, these questions that they're asking about unapproved curriculum, how curriculum differs. So if we could just spend a little time just explaining the basics on that, that would help me. Because I'm kind of getting hang a bit, a little bit with everybody here, the three years I spent here. But, uh, but it helps me to explain to maybe the community with more confidence when they ask these sort of questions. So what would be the difference in those two?
Oh, okay. That the particular texts that we chose really helped us to implement our math curriculum. So in a way, it's a little tricky because the curriculum and the materials happen to be very similar. We use the materials to implement the curriculum. So then when I think about programs or materials, we have many things that are cross-curricular, like social, emotional learning. And that's a big part of what our vision of the graduate is. And that we want to make sure that all those components are given to kids. And we have to have those all the time across all content areas and across, you know, recess and every place else. So therefore, then we have programs to help us implement that, to make sure that we are meeting the needs of all our diverse learners. So that's more of a program or materials to have all those cross-cutting things that we want to make sure that we're giving students the opportunity to have. And to graduate with the vision of the graduate capacities accomplished. So that's about the simplest way I can explain the difference between what you approve as the Board of Education, the curriculum, the frameworks and the scope and sequence. And then how do we implement things that are cross-curricular, like SEL? So like second step, Ruler would be programs to make sure that we're helping students with their social, emotional learning. Because there's not a curriculum for that. There are things that we know are important.
Let, let me address, that's a good example, the Ruler example, because I did hear that, that, that person or people get up there and they talk about this Ruler program. Now, a daddy bragging moment. My daughter happened to be a, at NYU as a pre-med and psychology major. And she was with the team and she would work as a research assistant up at Yale when they were developing Ruler. So I certainly had some experience. Or when it was mentioned, I knew nothing about it. We were talking about it at the dinner table one day and she said, well, I know everything about that. I was involved in the design of that. Do you remember Christie, right? Sure. Yep. So, yep. So I quickly learned what it was because I didn't know what it was. And it, and she made it kind of simple. And we offered the opportunity to some folks who had asked about it to maybe talk to her about it. But she made it really easy for me to understand that it's trying to create emotions into a language that could be universal and discussed amongst people, where those emotions could be described in many different ways. And to have a universal language so you can communicate, that's the way she, I, I'm not really good at things like this, but maybe she didn't explain it to me correctly, but I kind of think it did.
No, that is correct.
So now, when, when the, the citizens, the, our constituents ask about why that was not approved, can we, walk me through how that falls under something that we were, that we did approve? And how that's under that umbrella? And, and how we could explain to our constituents about why it was, why our policy covered that by approving what we approved and how that derived into, into that specific thing they're talking about?
I think if you look at the vision of the graduate and the capacities, that's what you approved. We have to have a way to make sure that students are exposed to those capacities, which include the things that we teach, the universal language that we hope comes across with Second Step and with Ruler. So that's really where you approve them.
It doesn't make it really connected. So I don't know, maybe we should try to figure out, because I think these people who speak at our meetings deserve answers, even if they're maybe not on target on, on some of their questions, maybe they are. But I, every person who speaks in any of our meetings, I stop what I'm doing, put down what I'm doing and I look at them and I listen to exactly what they have to say. They only have an hour and it doesn't take a lot of time. And a lot of those, a lot of attention to really focus on that. And a lot of those people, they deserve these answers. So we might want to think about, as time goes on, maybe somehow helping them connect how that falls under certain categories. That and going back to making sure we have the approvals at the highest level, as you described, connected to what courses or whatever else they're saying we haven't approved. Because I would like to make sure that everything, certainly that gets taught in the schools is approved. So I'm not saying this is something we have to do right away, but this is something maybe we, if it doesn't exist, and it might already, but if it doesn't exist, well, I'd certainly like that, to have that looked into. Because I think it's crucially important for us to have tremendous amount of transparency. In everything we do, there can't be too much transparency. So I know it's hard to create the transparency that's necessary sometimes. But you know what? Hard is something we just have to go at hard and go, we teach our kids to work hard. So we have to work hard to do the same, same sort of thing. I keep hearing these same things like social, emotional learning. And I remember, Michael, wasn't it you that mentioned it pre-election to the Board of Education, that things like that need better explanation by, by the, by the educators, by the Board of Education, by us? So basically, I think, well, maybe it falls on us, maybe, I don't know, who it falls on. Because we're just trying to figure out how, I'm trying to figure out the best way to address these things. We have to explain how that makes sense rather than people looking at it and seeing it as something they're confused about.
I was just going to say, at our last time we discussed the curricular plan, improvement plan and management plan, I think it was last September, the 20, we had a deep discussion about this as well. Because I'm going to use us as an example. You use the term Board of Education. There's two Boards of Education. There are the elected members of the Board of Education. And then there are the administrative members of the Board of Education. But the term brought Board of Education is a broad term that sort of encompasses all of us. And it is consistently used for one, when it is meant for the other and vice versa. The term curriculum is, is similar in that. And I think, Mr. D'Amico had a really good explanation for that last September. And I'm not going to try to make you think back to that. But, um, you know, because the term, no, no, but the term, but it's true. I've, I've spent a lot of time trying to explain this to individuals as well. Is that right? So the overarching curriculum are the specific needs and the standards that each course and student, that the students need to reach it in that course and master by the end of that year in order to move forward, right? So if it's ABCs and 123s, you have to do additional first grade math addition and subtract, simple additions and subtract, subtraction. So that's the overarching curriculum. And then below that, you have curriculum mapping, which is not our responsibility. That's those who study to become educators and how they take those standards and put that into terms where, how do you get from point A at the start of the year to point B at the end of the year? So these students can know that one plus one is two and two minus one is one. And then further from there, there is, are the lesson plans. So you take the curriculum mapping, where students need to be at a certain point to be able to move forward. And then there are those lesson plans, right? So that's what our teachers are doing on a daily basis to ensure that those students are learning what they need to learn on that day to be able to make it to the next point to move forward. And that is where the, you know, not just, it's, the textbooks are overarching, but there is other materials that come into the daily lesson plan. There are assessments that come in as part of the curriculum mapping and the daily assessment plan. And there are also the other, the points where we are learning our students' needs along the way. And our teachers have to adjust those daily lessons, daily lesson plans. Because, you know, student number one got it on the first go. Student number two is struggling a little bit and needs to have a little bit more reinforcement in that lesson. And then student number three, I didn't get it at all. And so the teacher then has to look at student one, two and three and figure out how to deliver that lesson so that they're all getting what they need. And so that's, that is not a point where we are at. And so I don't know if I did, I don't know if I did it justice.
I, I agree 100%. And so if I can take any credit for teaching that to you, I will. But, but.
This is, this is years of sitting beside you at meetings.
But another way to look at it, and again, I don't mean to oversimplify curriculum because it's incredibly complex, but you can look at it in two ways. The what and the how. So what do we have to teach? That's the standards, the expectations set forth at the state and national level. But then, well, how are we going to teach those? Sometimes people jump to the conclusion that it's always through a textbook. And it's not always the case that it's through a textbook. There's multiple ways of ascertaining knowledge through units of study. Again, it's the how that becomes the art of instruction. And that's where teachers really are required to put the effort into. And that's not the level of the Board of Education. But it's okay to ask us about the how. I think it's important that we can explain the how because the how has to correlate to our results. And if we can't make the correlation between the what, the how and the achievement, well, then systematically, there's something that's broken.
Well, thanks, manager. I only have a little bit more to touch on. I'm really interested to hear every, everyone's explanation. It's great. And it's actually, it is helping me out. That's, that was very helpful. But I guess some of the things that are, the, the things that I try to answer with stuff that's kind of spreading in a, like, in a, in a misinformation of people talking about stuff out there and saying this exists, but they, they don't know where to ask the question. So they come to a Board of Ed meeting and say, hey, we want to know the answer to this. And we just sit there like, can't say a word. I mean, we hear words like CRT and woke and things like that are being mentioned, are in our curriculum. Now, the curriculum is approved by us at a high level. You, you all just described to me at a very high level. And how would like a thing sneak in? Because I keep hearing people saying like, things like, words like I had just mentioned are kind of sneaking in to our, how does that get managed? That it doesn't sneak in to our, our big, broad umbrella approval at the curriculum level? And then we get down to the multiple levels you so eloquently described to me and informatively. Thank you. How would it sneak in? Or how would the fence, the defense mechanism set up where it can't or it won't? Just so I can explain to these people that are spreading some stories around to each other that things like this might or might not exist. How, help me explain to them how we're, well, is policing that the right word? Or how we're managing that? Or how we're controlling such things? I mean.
I think, I think oversight, I think oversight's a good word. But you did say you were going to start off with the easy questions tonight, Joe. And I don't know that's necessarily the easiest. I would encourage all parents to go to our website. I've been in this position for three years and we've said that we're going to be extremely transparent about what we're teaching our children. And we've created public-facing documents so that parents can delve deeper into what we teach. You're, you're giving an example of people making the correlation between CRT and Second Steps program. So I'm going to go right to that. So if you go to our website, the scope and sequence for our K-5 program is there for all parents to review. And now we have, you know, the 6-8 program, scope and sequence posted as well. I challenge you to find within the scope and sequence where you draw a direct correlation or even an indirect correlation between the lessons provided in the Second Steps program and what people refer to as CRT. I don't think you'll find it. I can't say it any clearer than that.
No, I believe it has been, no accusations. I'm just trying to help answer questions that, that are asked of me and I see in public, public comment. Now, there are diversity, equity and inclusion. The words themselves make so much sense, don't they? You know? And people are saying that, no. Well, I guess the, I think the debate at times is equality and equity. I think some people are arguing that one. But, uh, but you know, it's, 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 it's things like that, that I, I just, I think we have to just make ourselves as clear as you just were, how to explain that, how to discuss that, how to draw people in and how to maybe make it easier for us to connect the dots in that category and say, and help these people. And a lot of them are truly, honestly nervous and scared. And it's a sincere feeling and they're concerned about it. And I would like to help alleviate that stress and, and work with them on that. So. I'm done.
Okay. No, I was just going to add, it's, there's the board member. And then I'm lucky enough to, of course, be a parent at every level. And I saw Ralph there for a second. I, the only open house I've had so far is the high school. And I could tell you, as a parent, I walked away knowing exactly everything my child was being taught in those eight blocks. And I am not capable of learning calculus at this point. And, but I now know every unit. I know every chemistry unit. I know everything in US history. I know everything about the English and computer science. I mean, we, I went through everything and they had handouts on the exact, every unit, how they're preparing in the case of the AP classes, the sequence of preparing for that. I was floored by the information that was provided to me as a parent on exactly what they'd be learning this year. And I was looking for an opportunity to get that in. I didn't see it as an, anywhere on the agenda, but you just provided me that. So thank you so much. Yes, Ms. Hirsch.
All right. I was going to say, another piece of it is what you're asking, how we police the materials? That's the exact, what we're looking at right now. This document is exactly how we're doing that. And it's something that had been asked for, for quite some time to ensure that, you know, that students across the district were learning things in a similar fashion. Yes, and as a horizontal and vertical like alignment. So that when they move from first grade to second grade, those students all know the same thing, no matter what elementary school they're going to. And then when they move from their elementary schools, they're all joining, you know, not all joining together, but cohorts are joining together in middle schools. And they walk in with the same knowledge. And when they leave those middle schools to go to our high school, they have the same core base of knowledge. And that is exactly what this document is supposed to provide. Additionally, they did the work, the Curriculum Institute and Committee did work to put together the vetting rubric, which we were introduced to a few weeks ago. I know one of my, and I'm just going to say thank you in advance because I sent my questions to you guys late. And I got a huge document, we all got about five with some of those answers. And the first question I asked was about vetting materials that are outside of textbooks. Because there are materials that are used in classrooms that are not just textbooks. And I'm happy to re-answer, ask the question so that it can be shared here. But I, I think that exactly what you're asking about is something that parents have been asking for here for so long. It's why I, at these meetings, I consistently say how grateful and appreciative I am for the work that's being done. They're providing support for our teachers with lesson plans so that they're consistent. They're providing support to teachers so they don't have to hunt down extra materials to, to deliver a lesson and they're being vetted. They are giving support to our educators so our educators can walk into those classrooms and do what they know to do best. Deliver the material in the way that they feel is appropriate to their students, to help those students achieve and grow, which we'll be talking about later, I guess, in the achievement report. And so I don't have a degree. I don't, I'm not a teacher. I don't have a degree in that. I'm not an administrator. I don't have a degree in that. But I believe in the people that are sitting in this room because I've, I've seen the work that they've done through my children, as have you. And so I think that for the first time, we've had, seeing this management plan, seeing all of the materials and the scopes and sequences for K-8 up on the website, being able to see all of that material in School G for the high schoolers and seeing what those courses, the overview for those courses are, has provided a level transparency we've never had here before. And so to me, I, I think we've made incredibly great strides. And so when parents come and they're frustrated, I, I, I do understand. I understand it's a long frustration. And I'm always happy to help and sit down and ask, answer questions also from a parent perspective. And so I appreciate you bringing this up because I think it highlights the incredible amount of work that's been done in the past few years in this district to, to bring forward, which is why we're now number three. I know you want to get to number one, but we're getting there. We're getting there.
Yeah. Michael Joseph.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with anything. I think as a board, let's be mindful of our role, right? They, and I do think, I hear what you're saying, Mark, and I, and I, and I don't, don't disagree. I do think though, we have to consider what, you know, our role is when it comes to the approval of curriculum, particularly when we're looking at policy. The, our policy very much speaks to textbooks. That's a very antiquated definition of policy, of curriculum. We, we all know that. So I don't think it is, I think it makes a lot of sense for the policy committee. This is, since this is a continuing conversation for the policy committee to go back and look and see, you know, what is our role? Because the transparency is, is 100% the way to go here and, and what the solution is. We have transparency at K-8. We're getting there at high school. I'm at the kindergarten level and I can see from my son, I know very much exactly what he's going to learn all year in kindergarten. As a board member, if I'm trying to figure out the high school curriculum, I can't find it anywhere. The, it's very difficult for me. If I wasn't, you know, I didn't go to open, and, and you know, the, you know, it's back to school now. Because I'm not a parent. So I think that's, and we know that that's where, you know, we know, of course, the, we're working and getting more of that transparency at the high school level on the, out there very clearly in one click. We talked about that last retreat at the, online. I think that's going to help. But I do think that the, you know, over the last 20 years, the definition of curriculum has changed such that boards approving just textbooks probably isn't adequate anymore. And I think that's where a lot of this fuzziness comes in. So I do think it makes sense as for the policy committee to reconsider this. I'm not sure, given our, I'd have to go back and look, given our current policies, if it's that cut and dry that the board approves, that the board approves textbooks, doesn't approve programs. I'm not sure that it's quite that cut and dry. I think that's something we need to, we need to consider. And that's where we're hearing a lot of this concern in the community or while up the, which I think we need to acknowledge.
Well, there is a policy 6140B, which goes way beyond the textbooks.
Right. But that wasn't, that wasn't the explanation we heard earlier. The, the explanation tonight was we approve textbooks.
So what I said was that, sorry. So what I said was that it was, it can be a little sticky, a little iffy. Because when we first had the textbook committee for our, to choose a new math text, we didn't know that we were going to choose a text that was perfectly aligned to our math curriculum, to what the standards were, to what the frameworks were and to what the student outcomes were. So we didn't know that it would be the way to deliver the curriculum. That was a surprise. So that's why sometimes it's a little iffy. It's not just the textbook. That, it just happened that it worked out that way. And that's what made me starting to think about, well, how do we explain curriculum frameworks? Having materials to be able to implement those frameworks? And how do we assess? And what do we do? So it's not, I wish it was cut and dry, but it's a process that we go through. So I'm sorry if you, if I was not clear with that.
I do just want to say from a positive comment, because Karen Kowalski's not here tonight. But she emailed me this morning and one of the things we're trying to do, because the team has done such a great job getting, there is a ton of information out there. So last year, like for our SEL, Second Step, we pushed that out once it was all on. So last year, like for our SEL second step, we pushed that out once it was all on the website. But some people might might have missed it. You know, we're in the middle of COVID. We're going back over. So you'll notice every Friday I'm including curriculum. And when we're at the board meeting, I take copious notes. I listen to the complaints and if there's something that we can do better. And I've heard the SEL piece uh, is something that people just weren't understanding. And so we pushed it out again last week. Karen said she had heard. Some really great feedback because people just didn't know it was there. We also updated the six eight in the same spot. Um, and we'll push that out again tomorrow as well. So I, we are listening and trying to be responsive. I think a lot of people are just so busy. They either like this meeting probably, I don't know, I can't see the numbers, but generally when we talk curriculum, probably anybody dials in. Or or they leave when we start talking about curriculum. So it's trying to get the information out. Yeah. What's that?
Twenty people.
Well, that and which is great, but but we're continuing to push that information out.
Six of them are from the high school.
I was also going to say you make a good point, though, and this is something we've talked about with reports and over. Something I spoke about even before I was on the board and countless presentations, I stood on the other side of the thing, talking to the board. We use so many terms here that are edgespeak. We use so many things and little. Isms, SEL, DEI, yada, 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 that we understand. And so to our larger community. They may miss, they they may interpret that to mean something slightly different because it is from their viewpoint or perspective. But until you sit down with somebody and say, well, what's your understanding of this versus my understanding of this? You realize you're maybe on different pages. And finding that uh, point in between where the, what we're actually doing. And so I I wanted to point that out because it's something we've talked about also for a long time here. And I know that sometimes we forget that, but. Else has a question, but I was going to go to one question because I thought it also went to what.
Yeah, sorry, Cody did have one.
I wanted to weigh in on this, but. Joe, just to your initial premise, I think it might be a little bit backwards to say. Parents are telling us there's an issue. Administrators tell us why there's not an issue. I think part of what we should be doing is looking and saying. It's probably not the case. The parents are making things up like that. When we hear there's an issue, there probably is an issue, at least on an isolated basis. It doesn't mean it's systematic. And the question should be not tell me how I can tell them their eyes are lying to them, but what can we do to continue to eliminate the cracks or the issues where they emerge, even if they're not systematic? I think to that point, there's, and this is a broader discussion and something that would relate to policy committee, but. I think about transparency, which is, I think we can do more on, but also the concept of red lines. You know, where do we, what what kind of guardrails can we put around so parents know that, hey? There's certain things that are not allowed or not tolerated. Um, like everyone is concerned about the, like you said, the woke things over politicizing things. I um, uh. We know that that happens in the schools. Uh, and so you you can argue about what degree, but. What are we, what can we do as a board to put policies in place to make sure that there's accountability to prevent that? Even again, it's not necessarily saying it's fully systematic, but I think that's something we have. We can't just say, well. You know, there's a bunch of complicated educational terms and they don't understand the layers and how curriculum works. Uh, I think we have to take it seriously and think about um, a systematic way we can address that. I just, there was a few comments that were made that I found a little bit troubling, I guess. The oversight of how versus what, and maybe it's semantic. I think just the fact that we have. There's a large emphasis in our existing policies on voting on specific materials. If they're primary materials, there's. Kind of, I guess, a loophole or for supplemental and reference materials, which gives teachers probably wiggle room to sneak things into the. Classroom that maybe parents aren't a fan of, but there's a, I think there's a fair amount of emphasis for the board to evaluate the how and not just the what. Um, and I think that's a responsibility that I'd imagine. Taxpayers, voters, whatever, want us to have. I think and the reason it's important for us to have that is when you operate in a system where I'm actually a big fan of the idea of saying, hey. Bottoms up, give more power and um, control to the people in the field. Uh, but that only works in a system where you have a high degree of accountability and. By the nature of teachers unions, that doesn't exist. And so we have to have guardrails and some kind of, you know, uh, top level system to um, prevent people from, you know. Taking their autonomy the wrong way because we don't have a way to, you can't say, everybody do what you want and we'll just keep the good, the good ones. And so I I uh, I think it's an important, I I I personally think that that's a role that we should embrace. And we should probably, from a policy standpoint, be looking at supplemental and uh, reference material and working with you guys on this. I don't think it's necessarily a fair question. For you to say, hey, tell, you know, defend yourself effectively. And it's not necessarily, I don't think it's the administrators. I think a lot of it has to do with the fact, striking that balance between. Autonomy of teachers, but recognizing that some teachers are going to do things that they're not supposed to. I know, like when I toured. The schools last year, this is a common thing that would come up with principals of, you know, they have to slap hands sometimes and say, hey, don't do that. But I think it all goes back to the parents and what they're looking for and um. And for, this is something that we need to bring back to the policy committee. I I don't want to spend much more time on this because I know it's not the core focus, but. Everybody else is weighing in, so I wanted to uh, give my two cents.
Okay. Okay, yeah. No, I mean, but hey, it's a retreat. So that's why, you know, and we now we're just starting on our normal time. So it's okay. It's okay. Um, so with that, um, it was a good discussion. Um, but yes, do you have anything related to the questions from us? Okay, I was just gonna ask one simple one. Sorry, and truly simple. Can you just give me a high level? What's the big change in the writing lesson plans for six through eight?
So as the curriculum management plan outlines, we're staying the course in middle school. Uh, last year, the focus was on six, eight reading lessons and social studies lessons. This year, we're turning our focus to writing instruction. So at the end of this year, we'll have accomplished reading, writing and social studies. So we're in our full first year implementation, just so everybody's clear on reading and social studies. Gardening frequent feedback from teachers. Teachers are getting onsite visits from our curriculum writers. They have avenues to provide feedback. We'll make refinements during the next summer curriculum institute in those two content areas. Um, we're just embarking on our uh, work with regards to middle school writing now. Kim can speak to uh, where we are in terms of bringing our committees together. So do you have a microphone over there?
As Mark said, we're currently, the writing process is started. The first deliverable um, from our curriculum writers for the first couple of units in each grade level are coming tomorrow. So we have a writing focus group of sixth through eighth grade teachers. So there should be one teacher from each school in each grade level. That will do a deep dive of the materials, will give feedback to the curriculum writers in a thirty day cycle. They'll also come in person. To meet with the curriculum writers to give feedback in person. And then all of um, the other teachers will have access to the materials as well and have an opportunity to give feedback. And then we will, um, as you know, have a curriculum advisory committee where we will have um, different six through eight teachers. We'll have some representatives from ALP, from special education, from our EL department, um, from the board, from PTAC. And as another opportunity to review curricular materials and to give feedback in that group. So that's what we've got going on with writing um, thus far.
And I just want to remind everyone that we went through an evolution last year when we rebranded curriculum advisory committee. And the sole purpose of rebranding was to create a higher level of transparency and involvement. So we did that for the big ideas math implementation. We did that for six, eight reading and social studies and we'll continue down that path for writing as well. Did it for ninth grade as well. Ninth and tenth grade math.
And there'll be two other sessions throughout the year too. So after each set of deliverables, we'll do the same process.
And minutes from those meetings are posted to the web.
Excellent. Oh, sorry. Yes, Ms. Downey.
I just want to talk about the process a little bit more, but just because this is a great chart, but just kind of talk through. The step like review for renewal. Obviously, the selection creation is a little more understandable and the implementation refined it. But let's talk about the review for renewal because we have some. Courses that we're doing that with. If you could just kind of talk about that process a little bit, I think it would be helpful for everyone.
Sure. Why don't we put it in in perspective? So Tara, do you want to talk a little bit about what review and renewal looks like in science?
Yep. So when we review for renewal, that means we're ending five years in the shaded color of green into blue. So we we've had this curriculum. We know we need to evaluate it. It's been in process for a while. And we just like to make sure that we're staying current within curriculum models. So we're going to evaluate how it's doing. That's the blue. And then when we review for renewal, that means we've officially moved it into red on our list. That means it's a focus area, a priority target. And it's what we're going to focus on that year. In classrooms, that means that we're looking at the materials as they are being used in that classroom. We are vetting some other possible uh, materials to use instead. We're bringing together those curriculum advisory committees and then we're. Moving towards yellow of formal selection or creating our own materials in-house.
But I'm just, I I'm obviously not an educator. There's the difference between the evaluation and the review, like you kind of, right? It's 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 going through the sequence over and over again. You know, how are you move, I mean, in about from an evaluation period to a review for renewal? Like what, what's the hinge? What what happens differently?
Yeah, and those blue boxes, we're really focused on student scores. We're focused on how that's being um, implemented in the classroom and how our students are performing. That's where we're evaluating what's going on. That's where we're measuring feedback from teachers saying, okay, you've been doing this. If you were to change it, what would you change? How are your students performing? What do your parents say? And then as we move into the red, that's when it's action mode. That's when we're pulling together our committees and we're ready to move on to the hard work of the selection or creation.
So just to be sure, so the the red, the that review for renewal means you're taking all the data. Right? Because it's data driven from what you have and then saying, okay, these are the parts of it that we need to improve, whether it's. Gaps in learning on a particular strand of something or. You know, taking too long to learn something. That's what that process is so that you have a focus before you go into.
So you know what your.
The selection and creation of new curric- like what go kind of what, what do we want to make better? What do we want to keep?
That's exactly correct. So you'll notice on the K eight boxes at the front. Our big areas for review right now are going to be in K five reading, which I'm sure Kim will have a chance to talk to at some point this evening.
But like, I mean, I ask about that, just um, APs. How much, I mean, we don't have, I mean, you know, I thought that was really dictated by the college board. I'm not sure how much liberty we have to, like, kind of, we put it into our cycle. But don't they mandate a lot of what goes into the classroom?
The AP has a syllabus that has to be followed. Teachers have an opportunity to um, personalize it to the kids that are in front of them, but there is a outcomes that they expect. They give them. A variety of materials. So they'll come out, let's say, with a new textbook. That is very different from the two thousand ten textbook that they've been using. Let's, I'm just going to use this as an example. Calculus B, AP Calculus B. So they've come out with a new textbook, which is more aligned to what's happening today. In the mathematical world and in the um, in the world of work and research and things like that. So that's how they'll do and manage the AP courses. We'll still bring them to you and we'll still bring the updates if there are updates and any new materials that we need to adopt.
Michael Joseph.
No, I think that's a good point. So I wonder if this is a uh, this is a draft or just a first time that that might be something to think about because I don't know, reading that year, the. I'm a live as a layman or even anyone, the uh, what the difference is between one and four, just looking at the names, they um, like we're talking about student, if number four talks about student. Outcomes was more about that would be something to think about. What's that? The phases. Yeah, the uh, but any of it. I, the question I had, why I had to, the I'm going back to the writing, uh, which makes sense. And I was a little confused. The um, so is the writing just social studies or is it social studies in ELA? What what's, because I thought it was ELA, but then you mentioned social studies.
So so last year was reading specific and social study specific. This year, we're going after, we're going, we're focusing on the writing curriculum.
Across or?
Correct. We're we're attempting to do interdisciplinary work where it's appropriate.
Okay, and so then. So I'm wondering, so what I was actually wondering, the um, the real thought, the um, because I think this is great, the um, you know, oftentimes. What are their questions accentuated certainly mine? I don't, I try not to accentuate the negative and they shouldn't because this is, this is a terrific plan and really, really isn't. I really like this, the way this is laid out. The um, and of course, the video was is a great community resource. Now that we have reorganized, right? The um, and we have um, our different curriculum specialists. I'm, I I am wondering um, if keeping to the five year cycle is is always necessary. They um, in particular, sorry Tara, they um, and thinking about science, they um, if. That does that, are we sure that that needs to wait um, until twenty four, twenty five, the um, for that? Looking at the science performance scores, which are up from last year, but still below content of targets. You know, is there a way now in Oregon, and now that we're reorganized, they that there are some aspects of this that can happen simultaneously because we have more people. Driving the ship in different departments.
So I know, I know Tara is dying to jump in and answer this question, but I just, I just want to take pause and remind everybody, when we make everything a priority. Then then nothing is a priority and we want to be very thoughtful of how much we put on teachers' plates at one time. And we're going to talk a little bit about that when we phase out of the middle school work and start talking about the elementary work and what needs to come. But also that I think it's important to look at our curriculum management plan as something that's pretty fluid. And we need to be responsive to several things. One, state mandates, uh, like for example, the Read to Write Act. We're going to talk a little bit about that tonight, I think. Student outcomes. If if we're not seeing the results that we thought we would see, and I'll use big ideas for for an example, although we are seeing the results we thought we would see. With big ideas and in a few years, I think we're going to be incredibly um, pleased with having adopted that program. We wouldn't wait five years to make a change um, within a curricular area. So. Although it may not be up for five years for intensive review, every year when the, when the state results come back. We're looking at direct correlations between the assessment results and the curriculum that we're putting in front of students to make sure that it's responsive to their needs. So with that, Tara, would you like to go into a little bit about science?
He said little bit because he knows I get, I get excited and talk too much. The other important part to talk about here is that our curriculum management plan priority targets are very closely related to funding. So I think Kathleen, you had asked before, or um, Ms. Downey, you had asked about. When we have something as red as marked for renewal, that means we're ready to program big buckets of funding into the following school year. As you know, we're going to be setting our budgets, which within between August and October for the subsequent school year. So when we mark something for review, we do have to look at big buckets of money traveling between all of our program based budgets for those priority targets. You can imagine that science is a heavy, heavy spending area, given the hands on materials that are required. We have some supplemental funding to handle that in the interim. And just because it's not a priority target in a specific year. Does not mean I'm not working hard to ensure that the curriculum is being implemented with fidelity, that we're helping teachers, then we do have plans to increase scores moving forward. Science is in a wonderful position because we have these national standards adopted by the state that are not changing. And that we have in place with foundational lessons that are being taught right now and we're confident in our curriculum. So I can say, having been in all the K five classrooms, that we're okay in science right now and teachers are gonna. Love the breathing room, two years of math to really make it work, two years of reading, and then I'm going to do two years of science. So we we like how that feels for a teacher and we are prioritizing social and emotional. Social and emotional experience for our staff as well. And this is really a nod to that while maintaining student scores and their experience in science.
Ms. Hersh.
Well, I feel like some of the questions I had have sort of been answered. So I was, I mean, I'll jump back to one of them after this, but um, just before we lose focus. I was actually going to discuss one of the, we looked at the high school. I was looking at the high school um, curriculum renewal plan. I know, you know, we've gone into depth in a lot of regards to the. Elementary and middle school, but high school, as Michael Joseph pointed out, is it's a different beast. And. That's also because if you, have you ever looked at our course catalog? It's like a, it's like a college course catalog, which is why it's. It's like a, it's like a college course catalog, which is why it's impossible to sort of get the same kind of gist as you would with the elementary and middle school, because they're, they're all on different paths at that point. I'm sure you know that is, but that's for the listening public. But my question for you guys, when it came to the high school, is, I'm sorry, I had it written down, is, I have two, actually, one is when we were talking about math, since we are Big Ideas, I'm really pleased to see that we've seen improvement in the year that we've used it to sort of help narrow that achievement gap and bring back some of the COVID slides. So that's good. I'm looking forward to seeing more data going forward. But are we taking a look at any higher level math courses as possible new courses? Because we have a huge, well, not huge, but we definitely have a cohort of students that started a few years ago in the middle school. I see Mr. Healy nodding and Kathleen should be nodding, who are starting to take much higher level and more advanced math courses. And so by the time they get to their junior year, they've already done BC Calc, and then where do they go? And so, so, so for juniors and seniors who are that two, three levels advanced, have we started to look at any of those? Because I'm sure that means it's going to be a textbook review and all sorts of other fun stuff.
Andrew is online, so I think he can answer that question. There he is. Thank you so much, Andrew. I know that you have done a lot of work on this and that you have been looking at those advanced courses that we need to start to think about for our students moving forward.
Yes, thank you, Anne. Ms. Hirsch, that's a wonderful question, and we're very excited by the advancement of the middle school students and the opportunity that that provides, not only our students, but our teachers and our wonderful high school as well. And so we, we are very fortunate to already have a number of courses that the kids can take, namely Advanced Calculus. Not too many schools around us have such a robust Advanced Calculus program as we do. We typically, I think this year, have about 28 or 29 students that are sitting in Advanced Calculus this year. And many of our other students will will go on to take AP courses in in both statistics and computer science. And as you probably saw from the report, our computer science scores are amazing. And, you know, our enrollment's never been higher, so we're very excited about that. But certainly, given what you just shared and the data that we're looking at, we are in the process of putting together a new, new course. I mentioned it to the board around this time last year. We're in the early stages of putting together a linear algebra course, which tends to be the next level of math that most of our students would take at university or college. And we have some teachers that are excited about offering that for, to our students. So I just actually had a meeting with Dana and Ralph today to start that conversation. And our next step is to to bring some of those ideas to our faculty committee, the LPC group, and then ultimately the board in the early winter or late, I'm sorry, late winter, early spring. So it's definitely something on our minds and we're excited by it. And, you know, I hope to have something to you guys very soon.
That's awesome. The more we can give to our students who are reaching beyond the limits of what we have currently offered is amazing. And so on another note for our high school, I had a quick question because I also noticed, I'm sorry to do this to you guys, but I, in the curricular plan, I didn't notice, we have a large section of visual arts and technical courses, and I didn't see any of the technology courses, video production, broadcast journalism, any of our family and consumer science courses listed anywhere in the review cycle. So I don't know if they, I'm wondering when those might get reviewed. Some of these courses are things that are, you know, for, you know, a lot of these students, we talk all the time about our students who don't always excel in math and and English, and some of them are more technical, some of them are more, you know, focused on all of these other areas. And so I was wondering when we might be digging into
Well, I can tell you that the family and consumer sciences teachers did work on updating their curriculum this past summer. And they now have a new team, so that's the work that they did this summer, and they have, they've done a good job with that. I know for, what does Mr. Mayo do? He has the
He does broadcast, video production and broadcast.
So he's working on that as well. And those are areas that we are still looking at, and how can we put them into our cycle? So we are looking at that because we really haven't had those updated in quite a while, so they need to be updated.
Thank you. So I'm sure, I'm sure we'll see another line next year, and which means you're going to have to either make smaller print or find much bigger paper. And then I was just going to jump quickly back because I think it's important for when we were talking about the curriculum plan. And I had asked a quick question, you know, most people probably didn't see the, you guys did such incredible work getting answers to the questions I sent. But we had a new vetting rubric, and I just was sort of trying to, I had asked where that, and I think this sort of goes back to some of the earlier questions, is where that, the vetting of supplementary, supplementary materials lands in the curriculum cycle. And I had asked, you know, any new supplementary materials, I assume, are vetted as they come in? But how do we review the older ones that are part of our curriculum that may not address the needs anymore?
So you're talking about items that were already in our classrooms?
Outside of textbooks, right? So we're talking, the vetting, you know, rubric is there for things that are needed, you know, when new documents and materials and things come. When you're talking about history, you talked about ancient history, things there don't necessarily change, but recent history does. And so I'm just going to use that as an example because that's, you know, you know, students read the newspaper daily for some of the courses. I know we have a teacher here who had them reading and deciphering stuff from, you know, newspapers and materials on the daily. And I, I mean, it was amazing for them to do that. The students had to self-selected those materials, of course. That's not, did not come from our schools. But I know when we're talking about current events, sometimes we need to vet materials to share with those students.
Yeah, it really comes down to, we have a vetting rubric so that everybody understands really what is the context in which you're reviewing. So, and it kind of even comes back to school law and looking at, you know, if you're going to look at a material, you have to make sure it's developmentally appropriate, that it meets the standards. You shouldn't just be bringing random things in just because you like it. And the vetting rubric is very simplistic in that way. And so if a teacher has a question, and I know we've had some where this year, where they could probably give you an example, if they get to one section and they're just not quite sure, then they go to the next level so that they're reaching out to the supervisor and they work through that process. And that's what it's for. And so far, I mean, it seems to be working really well. And I think as much as anything, it's helping people hit pause and just think more about the supplementary material, if it is something new and does it really, does it meet the standard of what they should be doing in the classroom?
And I guess the last question I have on that one, I asked already as well, if our teachers have given any feedback on the vetting rubric, how how they feel it supports their needs, because I assume that, you know, there may be some feedback that might, you know, we always want to bring our teachers into the conversation because they're the ones that are taking this and running with it on a daily. So I just wanted to make sure we're including them if there's the updates that are needed.
You know, I think part of being a great educator is you're always wanting to take feedback and you continue to grow and get better. That's why the curriculum management plan in front of you has, you know, grown over the last couple of years. And I think that when we meet with GEA, they gave us some good feedback, actually, at our last meeting. And probably one example was, there's a section on the rubric where it talks about point of view, and it shouldn't just be one point of view. So we got into a conversation, we could probably write that section of the rubric a little bit better because we do want our students to be able to look at different points of view. So we're taking feedback, we'll continue to work on it all year long. There are some teachers that probably don't like it at all, and there are some that really like it because they feel like it's a comfort to have it. But we're going to take feedback and continue to tweak all year. I see Chuck nodding his head with GEA.
And I know there's an old saying that, you know, you can't make everybody happy all the time. So if everybody's slightly, a little bit unhappy, then you've done it right.
Interesting. That's interesting. I like that.
Slightly, slightly, slightly happy, slightly happy, just a little bit. And to think that, to think that, weren't you like in communications, wasn't that your job in the past?
By the end of the meeting, I will have the exact quote for you, I was paraphrasing. But my point is, is you can't make everybody happy all of the time. What makes one person uncomfortable is something somebody else is clamoring to learn about. And so, you know, you have to kind of find a happy medium. Is that better? Happy medium?
I don't know if there's more questions, but I was just going to say, since I am sadly the oldest person on the board, no, wait, sorry, longest tenure on the board, certainly not the oldest, okay? Hopefully only Cody is under me. But this was like nothing I've ever seen. When we started this process, I remember sitting in this room, and I don't know, there was this whole, I don't even know what it was that was put in front of us when I first joined the board. But let me just tell you, you walked away and there was only confusion, and it was a random point in time that connected to nothing. And so you just sort of said, oh, okay. But this is, you're providing like a holistic overview and a plan, and it's kind of how a private organization runs. And so I really appreciate this. Thank you very much. Else on this topic? Okay, I'm hoping that everyone's going to be able to chance to speak here tonight, but I suspect when we go to achievement data, that's what they're here for. So, um, so let's go to the achievement data report so that we keep this moving. It was 34 minutes.
And I have prepared a pop quiz for all of them, so I don't know who actually watched the video and who didn't.
I was Yeah.
And I know, and I know where he messed up, and he didn't catch it, so I had to catch it for you.
That's multiple.
Yes.
So we aim to please, we hope you enjoy the videos. If you have questions, the entire team
And the team up there is there.
Ready to go.
Yep. Okay, do you want me to go first, everyone, somebody else? Okay, I have to go to math. So the, there was a trend, right? That it seems that unfortunately, our achievement goes down as the grades go up. And, and the primary answer that seemed to be provided was that the math rigor increases. And therefore, for some reason, we're not, our children aren't meeting it at the same percentage expectation. But my question is, language arts also gets more difficult, right? So is there something wrong with us? Or is there something wrong with the comps out there? Or is there something wrong with how the state is measuring the rigor? Because that was just, there weren't any comps for that, whereas there were comps, I noticed for, for special needs, there were comps for high-need students. But for the overall metric versus the state, there was not. So I'm trying to understand if, what's happening.
So glad to kick things off here for the achievement report. I think in order to keep it as simple as possible in the spirit of how Mr. Kelly kicked off this whole meeting, if you, if you start back in, in elementary school, in kindergarten and first grade, kids learn concepts. In second grade, they apply those concepts. So that makes sense to everybody, right? So in third grade, they learn new concepts. And then in fourth and fifth grade, they apply those concepts, right? So there's still new things being learned every year, but certain grades are heavier. So K one and three are heavy in new conceptual learning. Two, four, and five are heavy in application of skills that you learned in previous years. Once you get to middle school, it becomes new concepts continuously, year after year after year. So I guess the most simple way to say it is, the conceptual learning is intensified once you get to the middle school level. So that could be one way to think about, why do we see this sort of like general downward trend from third-grade standardized scores to eighth-grade standardized scores? So that's sort of the most simple way to talk about it. We can talk about what we're doing to address it, if that's what you'd like to do next, or if you have a follow-up question, I'd be happy to answer.
No, I think that's, I do want to hear what we're doing next, but then it also does go to, the state should figure that out, right? And therefore, shouldn't they be sort of rescaling? Or is there something wrong with us? Or should, you know, should we be, I mean, I know, so yes, how do we address it? Because I want to meet their standards, but is there something inherently flawed about it versus like the language art standards?
Yeah, so I wouldn't speak to whether it's inherently flawed at the state level, but what I would say is what we're doing, right? So just a little trip down memory lane, which, which I shared last year. You know, for the better part of a decade, we were kind of all over the place. It was the Wild West. Depending on the school, grade level you were in, you, you got standards that the teachers were adhering to, but they taught them in different ways. So the Big Ideas helps us with that uniformity. So that's year one, right? We implement this new, new program, and everybody across the district is aligned vertically and horizontally, to use Mrs. Hirsch's analogy before. Once we're aligned, now we're in year two. So the focus this year is, how do we get the discrete data that we need that tie right to skills so that we can support classrooms, small groups, individuals? So as we had spoken earlier in the year about IXL, we're leveraging a tool that we already had to get more actionable data so that we can support the needs essentially of individuals. What did we have in the past? We had SBA data, which is by target, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and it's many standards in that target. So it's kind of difficult to like sort of flesh out exactly what a particular school or grade level needed through the SBA data. We just see overall benchmark. Then we have Linkit, which gives us a little bit more discrete data, so we can see the actual standards, we can see the question types. So that gives us, you know, by standard, what the kids need to work on, and it does break it down into skills. And so we started to use Linkit that way. But IXL gives us the skills even more discreetly. So for example, in third grade standard 3082, might have 15 discrete skills that students need to be able to math. Year one implementation, year two gather data that is actionable, that is real time, that we can use, you know, get the data the night before, use it the next day. And then next year, it's, okay, now that we have this data down and we understand what's coming in, what our trends are, how do we look at our instructional model to be a little bit different? You know, in elementary school, we have the same kids all day as teachers and, you know, there's flexibility to have, you know, like small grouping based on the hour block of time. And so we have the station model that we use where kids rotate around. In middle school, there are time constraints. We have 42-minute blocks of time. It's difficult to transition from the traditional whole-school lesson delivery to, you know, having three distinct groups, because that would be 14-minute groups. I mean, by the time you transition through them, you would have lost a lot of time. So we have to figure out how we can use this data that we get from IXL to be more discreet with our small group instruction at middle school level. And, you know, it's, trying to be cognizant to the, to Tara's point earlier, on the social-emotional health of teachers, because, you know, you throw a new program, then you throw some new data mechanisms. And so we get used to these types of things, and then year three, we start to look at the instructional model and say, how could we approach this maybe a little bit differently? Because if we keep doing the same thing, getting the same results, we all know the, you know, the sort of punchline to that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Sorry to throw you the tough question at the beginning, but I knew if anyone could handle it.
I want another one.
Yeah, go ahead, Michael Joseph.
So, so, I hear you. The, so I'm looking at page four, right, which is the overall page with the, with the math SBA results, right, on chart four here. They, and to Kathleen's point, obviously, in middle school, the, if you're looking at pre-COVID numbers and post-COVID numbers, you're seeing, you're seeing a large gap. I mean, in seventh grade, it's 10 points, right, our students last year scored 10 points below what they were before COVID. Our seventh graders did pre, pre, pre-pandemic. I look at that from a, from a macro level, just looking at that, and I say, well, that's an example of, of learning loss. The, and I don't know if that's the case. So the question is, are we seeing that in things like IXL? Where were we seeing standards in fourth, fifth, sixth grade that students haven't mastered on showing up in middle school? Is that the kind of thing that that we're seeing it talking about as far as where the need for small group instruction and these kind of tailored tasks is, is the IXL now, is that what it's showing?
Thank you for teeing this up for me. So IXL, when, when it pinpoints where the student is, it gives you a, a score. So a 560 would be a fifth-grade level, 60% through the year. IXL is our math program that we use basically for, you know, drilling and skills practice, but we're leveraging But we're leveraging an aspect of it that's, has a diagnostic feature. So we can figure out where a student's floor or ceiling is. So it allows us both downside and upside sort of viewability. So, so anyway, five sixty would be a fifth grade, sixty percent of the way through the year. So hypothetically speaking, you could have a student that in seventh grade that got a five sixty. So that would tell us they're achieving right now at a fifth grade, sixty percent of the way through the year. And it would give us the skills plan that's specific to that kid, what they need. Can we identify trends from that? Yes. There's actually a button in the program that says, what are the trouble spots? You click it and then it gives it to you across the grade level. I have the district view where I could see it across the entire district. Now, is it giving us anything super new that we don't already know? Not really. You know, it always falls back to the same old things, which is why we need that uniformity. Vocabulary uniformity, the instructional technique, uniformity. So yes, we are able to identify trends across buildings, across classrooms, across the district. And then we figure out, okay, is this a specific skill or a specific standard that we might need to beef up a little bit in our professional development? And then we'll work towards what would be the best way to teach fraction equivalence? Or, you know, what would be, you know, a, a better way to teach kids the standard algorithm for division? So it gives us a lot of information. I would say we're in our sort of soft restaurant opening of it. So we're trying to still figure out exactly all the functionality. And we have some cool professional development coming up on, on election day. And we're going to dive a little bit more discreetly into the data and see what kind of trends and things we can find in, you know, in our classrooms and across the district.
Ms. Conston, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So can you hear me all right?
You're good.
So I just want to say, you know, looking at the SBA scores, there is a jarring disparity between some schools like New Leavenham Ave and schools like Riverside. It's, it's, you just can't ignore it. And I, I really want to know if we're doing something that is not working for these students. You know, what, what is it that is not, that is not helping them the same way? You know, there's got to be, there's got to be some way to address it. And I just, I don't know where the trouble spots are. So I guess that's, you know, what I need to find out. And then the other issue is, you know, yes, rigor does increase as the grade levels progress. But for those students that are maybe struggling in middle school to then have to swim in such a big sea at the high school and, and you know, it, it seems like it's sort of an uphill climb too late if there is an issue with keeping them at grade level, keeping them achieving where they were. So I, I just sort of want to understand how we catch, how we catch them, you know, before they falter in the late, in the later grades. So it's sort of a very different two-part question. One, you know, how are we going to fix what is not currently maybe working at New Leavenham Ave? And, you know, again, as they progress, all children through the grades, not just on one side of town, there is such a, a drop off in, in achievement before high school. I just want to be sure we're catching students who hit a trouble spot. And I, I mean, I have two high school kids and, and the rigor certainly intensifies as the grades progress and, and they soon learn after kindergarten. And after first and second grade, school is, is more serious business. It's not just where you go to socialize. So, you know, I just wanted to ask the question.
Okay. So we'll start with elementary and we all know that we've operationalized into our budget. Math interventionist at the elementary level. To use those two schools that you referenced specifically, they both have two math interventionists. Now, before they either had one or maybe not even a full one point O. And part of that may have been paid out of their own budget. So now they have two. So response to intervention, which basically what that means to the layperson is getting kids the help that they need when they're struggling is happening earlier. One big shift we made this year was we implemented a kindergarten screener for every single student that walks into the Greenwich Public Schools. Our math interventionist screened them to see what requisite skills they're bringing to the table. So right off the bat, we're getting sort of a bird's eye view in each building of what the kids are bringing. So we're identifying what's happening. And then from there, we start to tailor our tier one instructions, which means the classroom instruction to support the needs of that particular class. So I guess it starts with having the right people and the right, and the right supports in the building. So, you know, our work's not done, done there. I will champion for more intervention, even up. Looking at Mr. Healy right now, even up to the middle school level, we need, we need another one at Central. And, you know, I will, you know, do my best to show, you know, how we're performing and how we could use people differently to, to support, you know, our, our math achievement. You know, what I would say structurally at the middle school is if you sort of compare it to the high school, when kids get into high school at the ninth grade level, they have many different ranges of sort of on slash around grade level, like four or five different courses they could take. There's an algebra class, an algebra and geometry class, all sort of combined. We don't have that leveling or that ability to be more discreet with where kids are at the middle school level. So there could be a need at some point to discuss, which involves money and staffing. How do we create levels where we can get kids the support that they need when it's not just a pullout intervention, which we don't really have a ton of those mechanisms at the middle school level. At Western, we have the staffing to do it. At Eastern, we don't really have the staffing at all to do it. And at Central, we have one person that can support that. But, um, you know, that's, I guess, how I would answer that question. And, and I think it's important to be proactive in our support of this and not reactive. You know, based on the scores, I think, you know, if we can get ahead of the, of things, we could be, we could see gains in achievement.
Just following up to that, I mean, kind of educationally, what's the timeframe, right? Like we implemented big ideas in year one, since we're on the math topic. And we're talking about what we've seen for the test scores and we've had the COVID issues, kind of, what's the timeframe you would use to say the program is working and that we're going to close this gap? And we've put all these tools in place, because I gotta say, I was going to have the same question as Laura about, we clearly have some schools that are more challenged. So what can we do? And maybe that's a budget question, Dr. Jones, when we're doing our operating budget about what we need to deploy in the schools that need more help. So if you could just talk to the timeframe, Mike.
So I'm just going to grab that one real quick. We used to have a wonderful gentleman that worked in the Greenwich Public Schools named John Curtin. And he would always say, three years makes a trend. So we really need to hold on to and stay steadfast. I have the utmost confidence that our curriculum advisory committee selected the right instructional tools.
Oh, my question, I just kind of was like, when do we evaluate it was kind of the question.
Okay, then I'll stop.
So with three years. So basically at the end of next year, you could really look at the data better.
I, I think you want to follow the cohort data. That's incredibly important. We can start to evaluate the successfulness of our program after three years. But I wouldn't after three years say that if the, if the data isn't suggesting incredible gains that we would depart from big ideas, but we would certainly reassess and evaluate where there could be potential vulnerabilities that we didn't expect.
Joe.
It's in the same line of questioning. You're saying a three year, we should see progress in three years on this, but you made a reference to more is better. Kind of like if we have more help, more personnel, more people, more teachers to teach the kids more. Is sort of a money versus need, want versus need. So I mean, these things have to be addressed. And I'm glad you pointed out the fact that we're looking at a three-year process to see this improve. So we have to put some, some hard evaluations on these things. If we're going to equate success, we're going to somehow have to attach money to the success to some degree because it's going to cost us more money to have more of that success. So we have to make sure it's a tight, tight evaluation. So to build on your point.
What, what I would say to that, if I could, Karen's heard me make these analogies when I was the principal of Glenville School. I love woodworking. I'm an apprentice carpenter. And there's this wonderful image that shows, for those who don't know what it is, a carriage bolt with a slotted top. So it's a flathead embedded in a piece of wood and someone trying to take it out with a wrench. And it says, effort with the wrong tool will equal no success. I'm confident we have the right tool and I'm confident that the nine hundred plus teachers we have are giving their maximum amount of effort. But you do have to ask, do we have enough teachers making that, that, that concerted effort that will influence a successful outcome? I don't know. You can reevaluate staffing every single year. But I'm confident in the tools that we have.
Sorry, Karen and then Cody.
Well, I guess it's sort of on the same line and, you know, as Laura and Christina were asking, because when I was looking, I was, you know, in addition to our Title I schools, which I know we've, we do put a lot in there. And, you know, I'm also seeing the cost Cobb's numbers have, have changed slightly drastically, which I had, in a, in a different way, which I know I had asked about. And I think the question there is, we're also looking, and then I looked forward to the middle schools. And there's a large disparity in our scores and growth model, growth at the middle school, between the three different middle schools. And the question then becomes is, since we are talking and budget is coming, today won't be operational, but that's coming soon, is, you know, do we have the right supports in place? If we don't have the right supports, what are the supports that we need to add in to ensure that every single one of our students meets their growth target, right? Because it's, every student has their own. It's not about getting a five on an AP for every student. Every student has their own path to go and we have to get that student to their point. So I know this is sort of a question for everybody. It may not be answered tonight and may be something we think when we come down to operational budget, but that's the question we want to ask. Joe's always talks about being number one. We've made it to number three. That's great. I know he wants still, he wants to push forward. So the question is, is how do we take these results? Because we have to look at the aggregated data. I can't even speak this evening and sort of see, because every school has different challenges, different needs. But we still have to look to see what we need to put in place at every single one of these schools. And so it may not be an answer for tonight, because there are fifteen schools, you know, and but I think that that's the bigger question we sort of have to look at is we, we know that we had the COVID slide. That's a whole separate piece. And we've been looking to try to reduce our achievement gap for a long time. That's a national problem that we won't solve here today or in the next twenty years necessarily. But I'd love to, that'd be great. But if we move it closer, it's better. So is there something that you guys have started to think about and discuss that you feel we're missing as the right support to put in place to make sure that all of our students, that we're moving them all in the right direction? And, and our educators, because they need to be able to have the support as well. Because without them, you know, they're just buildings with children in them. So.
I think I'll simply answer it this way. There's the traditional, there's the known ways that we've intervened to try to close the achievement gap, to show improvements, to be responsive to all of our learning communities. And in some cases, we've been slightly successful or somewhat successful. Have we sustained success? Not in all schools. If you want to see lasting change, then we have to, as a group, think about some drastic changes. So right now we live inside this box, but change occurs outside the box. So I'm going to float something out there that I just want you to consider. We've never discussed having year round schooling in some of our schools. We might want to start exploring different avenues and approaches to how we give access to schooling year round for some of our more fragile learning communities. You might want to extend the school day, explore different magnet themes like a six to six. Again, these are all things that, you know, can work in the right conditions with the right support. But they're not things that in Greenwich we've talked about in the past. So these are radical shifts in thinking. Does it require money? One hundred percent. Does it require buy-in? One hundred percent. You can't always make sweeping changes just by changing a program. Sometimes you have to make systematic changes, philosophical changes to the way we approach our work. So I'm asking you to think very differently about when we talk about how do we address these problems? Let's not rehash some of the things we've tried in the past that haven't been, haven't been shown to, to show sustainable improvement in those schools year in and year out.
Wow. I was just gonna say that is so not where I thought you were going to go with that, but I do remember.
Superintendent might not have thought I was going there either.
Remember, I do remember your discussion on the lower elementary school and the middle elementary school, dividing those up between. That was a discussion we had a decade ago, I feel like. But so I should not be surprised, but thank you. You've given us, leaves me a lot to think about.
Cody.
I think what you just said is really great and going towards the systematic changes. And I think everyone should speak up about stuff. The one I would want to add to your list of innovation, innovative things we should consider is introducing a charter school in the district, which is a conversation we can have another time. I was just going to make a comment about this. I find it very difficult to really get a sense of what's actually happening in the schools based on the, the, the information in here. And I'll use an example of, there's a lot of discussion around the lower performing schools and higher performing schools. And oh, what are we going to do about Ham Ave or Julian Curtis or? But I think it's important to note that the information in here doesn't actually tell us if those schools are underperforming as institutions. Because we don't know what the baseline is with those kids being in a, in a generic school or not in a school. What, what I'm saying is that you have this school as an institution and then you have the demographics of the school or other factors that are kind of beyond our control. And both of those have an impact on scores. Like if you had a school where no one spoke English, you would expect the English scores to be a lot lower. So it wouldn't tell you much about the quality of the school if the English scores are lower, or just to point out an obvious one. And so one, one point about that is I don't think we should overlook the schools that have high scores in terms of potentially, like we, we just don't know, or at least I don't, from looking at this, where the improvement is actually needed most from an institutional standpoint. We know that there's more room for the scores to go up at certain schools. But it also could be the case that those schools are actually serving their students better than some of the schools that have higher scores. And we sort of saw a weird, COVID gave us a weird way to test this because we were able to see what the declines were when the kids were out of school. And I don't have those numbers in front of me, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think some of the schools that have some of the lower scores here had the biggest, is this right? Had the, the biggest drop off in, in scores when they were out of school and some of the other ones, like.
I don't want to hazard a guess.
Okay, I, we should double check that. But it, it's interesting because the broader point I wanted to make here is just, I think we have a data and benchmarking issue in that unless you have some control or something to compare it to, you really don't, you can't get as good of a read. I would, like, I'd be remiss to say, oh, Ham Ave is not as good of a school as Riverside because the students who have been there for five years aren't hitting their benchmark because there's a lot of other factors. And so I think we really need to think about ways that we can, either if it's picking, you know, other schools with at least somewhat similar demographics that we can get data on and track and compare. But there's got to be something to give us a sense of comparison to really get insights from this. I, I, I like flipping through the deck and the, the presentation you guys did. But I, I just, I don't really have, I don't know what conclusions necessarily to draw from a lot of this. And I think we can do better in, in terms of coming up with creative ways to evaluate, you know, how we're doing.
So you mentioned the five-year data and that really is new for us. And we're doing exactly, I think, what you're, what you're asking about is really digging in and considering that maybe a building has a different demographic and they made great work maybe going on in that building. And I would reference you to page twenty-seven, because when we pulled all this data, we really want to eliminate excuses for in migration, out migration, a really high population of students who are learning to speak English. Of course, they're not going to perform as well, but if you look at new. Of course, they're not going to perform as well, but if you look at New Lab on this, on this page, it's 72% for ELA. Something is going right in that building for ELA. And we want to get in and really figure out what that team is doing. Because if they can keep their kids and they have them in their school, they're making progress and huge progress. So we're, we're doing a lot of that and we literally with the state now are drilling down to individual students. And so we'll, we'll work hard at trying to bring in better information to the board, how we can do that for you. But all that work is definitely taking place. And I think when Mark referenced like year round school, we're having all those kinds of conversations. What are some things that we can do that are really different that might actually emulate like what we're seeing at New Lab on the five year for ELA across all of our schools?
And I agree with you. Actually, I like the five year thing is interesting because you're kind of saying you're, you're. What, what would be really cool is if you compare cohorts of kids that are five years versus say two years. You should see a difference if we're like coming up with the right controls. One thing I was going to throw out there is, um, and may, maybe at some point, because this is, some of this would be kind of interesting, fun statistical stuff to do, which is not necessarily in the job descriptions. I imagine of most of the folks in this room. Not that they're not capable of doing it, just it's a lot. Is, is to look into hiring a consultant of some sort that could come in and do like a very deep dive analysis. Cause we probably have troves of data and I, you know, I'm not a fan of spending money, but. Yeah, I was, I, I was a math major, so. But I think there's something, that's something we should consider. Cause I, I feel like if it's one of those things where if you pick the right control variables, you can actually glean a lot of insight. And, and something like the, this, what you just pointed out, Tony, with the new lab success, like those are, those are the things that we want to find. And also you want to educate the community about, because you have a self reinforcing cycle where people say, oh, this school is not good because the scores are low or whatever. So I'm not going to send my kids there, but it's actually like a great school, but you just don't know, because you don't know what the control is.
I was just gonna say, so when we get these scores, we look at them in overall and every school gets an individual school report, a report for, from the state. And then they compare it and they can go in, they, and I, when I use the word manipulate, it comes out like they're changing things. There's not, but they can manipulate the data by looking at the students by grade, by need, by whether they're students with 504s and IEPs. If their students said English is not their first language, they can go in and take, look, a look at different cohorts throughout this. They, they look at these scores in so many different ways. And I know just from being a parent at the PTA, almost every time I've, you know, every, every year, the principal would come out. One of them sitting here and they'd go through that data report with the parents and discuss the different ways to look at the information. And to talk about the needs of that particular school. So I assume, and it was one of the questions I asked, that you guys are doing that in comparison to seeing. So you may, you don't want to sit down, I, I just, because I know that was one of the things you're interested in. I know I am too, and seeing what needs there are at different schools based on different pieces. So it's just a point, if you haven't, if you don't have a student in the school and you haven't been at a PTA meeting per se, you may not have been aware yet. Cause we just.
Yeah, but that should make it to this report. I shouldn't have to go out and hunt that down.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying that there's, you know.
So we're going to talk a little bit about that when we talk about, and I think it's labeled as site improvement plans. There really are school improvement plans. And we'll talk about the through line that, that leads right up through our strategic plan for the district.
Ms. Costin.
So just a question, because at some point along the line, our summer school or however we branded now. Our extended school year model changed. It used to be that children who struggled or their teachers felt they would benefit from additional instruction were offered placement in our, in our extended school year. And currently it's really for children who have a special education need. And I just want to know, I, look, I know it takes money to stack those kinds of programs. So I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, when did it change? Why did it change? Can we change it back? Because I know that, you know, not every family can afford a tutor. And a lot of tutors are completely fully booked across all grade levels. You know, if you call the ones on the Greenwich Public School list. So, you know, I just, I think, you know, Mark D'Amico brought up a really, a really important point. But we should be offering extended school year to all children. Who have an educational need and who would benefit from the added instruction. And, you know, I, I just think that it is a really important. Tool in our toolbox and I, and I don't know that we're using it. And particularly during COVID, you know, the, the extended school year hours were, I mean, it. I got to Glenville and then like I could, I had time to go to stop and shop for, you know, a hot minute before I had to go back and pick up my child. So I, you know, the time spent there. Was certainly, you know, curtailed during the pandemic. So I just, I, I really think. We should start looking at that as an option. Because not only is there a summer slide, but there, there are some kids who, who need to be caught on that slide. That may not have a diagnosable need as far as an IEP, but may really benefit from the extra instruction.
So our summer school program targets those students who are performing at the lowest level. Those are the students that we invite to our summer school program, which was from nine to 11 or 11:30 this year. The tutoring was for those students that the parents wanted the students to come in just to have that reading instruction to improve their reading. Then there's the ESY program, which is for students who have been identified as needing to stay in school for an extended school year. That's determined at their IEP, at their PPT meetings and then is included in their IEPs. They are not required to come, but many parents do send their children. So we changed it so that we could meet the needs of the students. And actually it was Dr. Jones's idea to do the tutoring and it was extremely popular that parents were able to have their children tutored. It was a three to one ratio and it was quite successful. Next year we'll change the hours for that, but we do focus on those lowest performing students. Five weeks is not a very long time, but you know, the extended school year, meaning year round school is something that we have talked about. For about a year now that we really want to see if we can put something into place and not next year, but perhaps the following year.
Yeah, I was thinking about this earlier as people were talking about staffing and money. And it's not always about staffing and money. It's about doing the right thing. And when I first came, one of the things that I noticed very quickly in summer school, we weren't making any, we, we didn't have great gains in summer school. We still had slide coming back and we were spending, it would probably be close to a million dollars more than we spent last summer. And so we've worked really hard trying to get the right programming to the right students. And some of our parents didn't want to send kids all day long in the summer. They wanted their children to be children and, you know, we could offer, you know, PE and music and all of those things. But a lot of what they were doing during the day wasn't actually focused on the literacy and the numeracy aspect. So we've made quite a few adjustments and we feel like we're getting better results. And we're doing it a much more cost effective way, which that has helped us fund things like, you know, whether that's math interventionist or reading interventionist. Because as you know, we don't get to come out and just ask for a lot of extra money. So we have to, and I was just in this conversation today. Because we noticed one thing for like ESY, running the tutoring model, which was very, very popular. Parents actually liked waiting on their children to finish tutoring, which means they weren't on a bus. So we didn't really expect the bus transportation savings, but it's there. So Dr. Hollygan Toller and I were discussing today about, well, that's great because she needs more money. As ARP goes away on her curriculum and continual training for the action plan. So we are really looking very careful at those areas like summer school and ESY.
Michael Joseph.
Cool, the, um. So I'm here, I'm hearing a couple of different trends here, the, over the course of the conversation. I think the first one is, as we know, we're consult, as far as this consultant, confronting the brutal facts, right? And I think we're all finding that. There is concerns here, justifiable concerns in some of the achievement data. It sounds like the concerns are in two, two large buckets. One is looking at certain grade levels, the pre-COVID, post-COVID, looking at the same grade levels and looking at and seeing the, the, the difference there. There's a slide or there's a bullet on page 42, which I must, I'm assuming is a typo because it says that. On page 42, it says that the scores are back at pre-COVID levels at elementary. And we've just spent 45 minutes saying that's not the case. No, it says math and reading and in the middle school, the middle school reading, they're not there either. There's still the gap. But in any event, so that's, that's one. Second. And I think the other air, big area of concern, which is the perennial concern here in Greenwich is the east west achievement gap. And we could say that's a factor of socioeconomics. But then if you look at this other breakdown, we see that it's not quite socioeconomically, it's not quite east west. Now we've got, because I think the five year analysis, students have been here for five years now. It's actually exposes that there were schools that, you know, that are doing on the eastern side of town that are doing very well. And there are other schools like Cos Cob that are very concerning when you look at the, their, their scores. It's only a fifth, Cos Cob only has a 15% free and reduced lunch population. So that's, um, that's, that's a real concern and I know we have no leadership there. All that said, I think there's three trends that the other, that were in the conversations that as a board, we need to be talking about, right? And we've been talking about, we need to, where, where can we go from here? It sounds like one of the real issues we have is a tier two problem. We know that we have curriculum that's ongoing and that's going well. And that's tier one, that's universal, right? The tier two, what are we doing for specific students? And we talked a lot about that. The, and Mike talked about that with the, use, it's particularly for math and I excel in identifying specific needs. And we talk about math intervention, interventionists, and we talk about small group instruction, things like that. They, it concerns me, the, that. The conversation is about how can we do more to now is how can we do more tutoring? Where might we need more math interventionists? Where might we need some other times in the day? When we had that conversation last spring, we were looking at how to spend the art money and we chose not to do that. Instead, we went forward with the high school. A student center, they, and I said at the time, which was when we come in October. I hope we're not going to say that we need more money for tutoring and interventions and things like that. So that ship has sailed. But we have to, the art money is spent. They, but moving forward, they, we really need to think about this whole idea of tier two. Because if we need math interventionist, we need to talk about it. If there is not enough time in the day for tutoring to Mark's redesign comment. I think that, that, I think we need to see a program about how we can do that after school and for school and things like that. I work in a system where kids are in school till 5:30 every day, 11 and a half months a year. They, and they need every moment of that, they. I don't think we should be afraid of that, but I think it does mean that we have to consider our priorities and we can't do everything. And some of these things are more important. This is our fundamental.
You said a lot of things in there, so I'm just going to. And New York is a very different funding model, New York City especially. So if we could get all of that money that New York does, that'd be great, but I don't.
We got a lot of art money.
Right, right. Not to the same, yeah, New York City certainly got a lot more. Michael Joseph, I followed that as well. So the, I was going to, actually, do you have more or because I was going to turn to something else? Language arts, since we spent a lot of time on math and I don't want to give any, and then I want to go to science and then, and then of course the high school. Cause that seems like that's the right order. Okay, so language arts. Do you want to talk about that? Cause I, I actually feel like his interpretation was kind of different than mine. So I'm going to. Hands it over on what your view is, I guess, of the scores on the SBI language arts.
Well. Kim, go ahead.
Okay, so as the slide that you can see where we're talking about near historic levels, we have, you can see that. After our 2020 year where we didn't take the ESPA for COVID. We have trends that are trending upwards, which is great. And in two of our, and two of our grade levels and third grade and fourth grade, we're back. At where we were at our, our highest high on this graph before COVID. So it's nice to kind of see those trends trending upwards. Hopefully we will continue to do that as per our new. Reading units that we have in six through eight. And, you know, as well, as we'll talk about reading at the, and our curriculum management plan, we hope to continue that trend up.
No, I would simply say, going back to our curriculum management plan. We recognized last year when we started our unofficial audit of our elementary reading curriculum, that there were deficiencies there. And vulnerabilities. And so I think partially what you're seeing is a stagnation in performance. Due to the fact that there's key areas that we're not teaching to. And so I'm incredibly thrilled to be turning our attention to the elementary English language arts curriculum review cycle this, this year.
And then I'd like to point out that on page 24, it seems that language arts kind of has an opposite trend of math in the sense that as, as they stay with us longer, the numbers are actually going up. So that's an interesting trend as well. Okay. People had more questions on, oh, did you, no, the class just came back on, no. Okay, go ahead.
And just to kind of, where do we feel, you know, this is back to, you know, what do we think we can do? Like even if we're happy with them, what are we doing to make them even better? Like I know we've, we've got math interventionists for the math. What are we doing in reading and language arts? You know, what are the tools we're looking at? What are some ideas for helping progress things along? And, and should we be thinking about maybe adding to the mix?
So let's start with what we have in place. This is our fourth year of rolling out foundations. This is the first year in third grade, but this is the fourth year our kindergarten teachers are teaching the program. We systematically rolled out first in kindergarten, then in first and then second in this past year in third grade. It's an incredibly core component of early literacy. We have companion to that, we're training our teachers in GOs, which are decodable texts. That align nicely with the scope and sequence of foundations. In fourth grade and fifth grade last year, we onboarded vocabulary workshop. We were supposed to onboard grammar workshop in fourth and fifth grade this year, but I put a halt on that when we started to hear about. Possible mandates coming from the state. Certainly didn't want to spend a whole heck of a lot of money on a resource that we might not be able to use. And I think that's a larger conversation to provide the board with an update on where we currently stand with the state mandate. So foundations is something that we're incredibly proud of. We absolutely need to continue to use foundation in our primary grades. We're seeing positive results that will transfer into ESPA data as a student cycle into the testing years. Where our vulnerability is, I've said this before, I'll say it again. And again, I knew this last year and we indicated in the curriculum management plan, it's our units of study. The vulnerabilities in the units of study in 60 seconds or less are in that they take into, they take for granted the amount of background information our students come to school with. And the amount of vocabulary they may have been rich, vocabulary they may have been exposed to. And that leads to trends and deficiencies very early on and very hard to track and catch up with. Yeah, actually I'm going to have Kim give you a very specific example of that.
So when we have kids that don't come, we have a vast array of kids in Greenwich. We have kids that have vast experiences, are exposed to oral language, go on trips, go to the museum with their families. Speak multiple languages in their homes. And then we have other students that, that don't necessarily have that, that level of experience. They've never been to a zoo, they've never been to the movie theaters, they've never been bowling. We, we were just having a conversation the other day of a great lesson that he walked in on. In an ELL classroom where the ELL teacher was in second grade, was explaining to a group of students. in an ELL classroom where the ELL teacher was in second grade, was explaining to a group of students what bowling was, this is a bowling pin, this is a bowling alley. And so those kinds of things that we take for granted when we are instructing students in, in the area of literacy really plays a big part. When you're trying to read a book about or an assessment book about the zoo and the children have never been to a zoo before, they don't know what a giraffe is, they don't know what an elephant is, they don't know what a polar bear is. It's really hard to help continue that kind of instruction when they are lacking experiences, they're lacking vocabulary. So one of the biggest things that we see is that that's a huge discrepancy at a young age. And that correlates to early literacy knowledge base. And you need that knowledge base to understand and to access our, our lessons. So our units of study don't explicitly build background knowledge. And that is one of the vulnerabilities that Mark is talking about.
And, and the units assume, and Kim, you can talk a little bit more about this and you can talk better about it than I can, about the assumption that grammar is embedded within the units. And quite frankly, it's, it's just not there. And we need to be, we need to teach our children explicit grammar skills. And that's one of the vulnerabilities in our current units as well.
Yeah, I think the philosophy of, of, of the units that were we talked about the science of reading last time and how we know that explicit instruction is very important for students in all areas. But some of our students come with a lot of oral language and they have the grammatical and the syntactical just an everyday language and they don't need as much explicit instruction as some, as another student might. And those students are able to, in spite of access that. But our units right now do not explicitly teach vocabulary. They do not explicitly teach grammar or syntax or any of those important elements. They're weaved into discovering them through more reading. And for some kids that come with those background knowledge and come with that, it's more natural. Other students need more explicit instruction in that area.
I was on a call the other day with 20 assistant superintendents of curriculum from across the state. I'm not going to name which districts, but they were all high performing districts. And it seems very common to have the following recipe in literacy instruction. They have foundations, they have Hegarty, and they have units of study. And they all agree that the units of study have those vulnerabilities. The difference is in the higher performing districts, as Kim is alluding to, kids are coming to school with a higher fund of knowledge, of background knowledge and experiential knowledge that they can immediately make up for those vulnerabilities and they don't necessarily need the explicit teaching in. We can't afford that. You know, when we talk about and you have the slides in front of you are a high needs population, we have to be very strategic in how we're approaching our instructional methodologies to meet those needs.
So when you have one of those, the tools, what are the tools you need to address those? I guess that's the question for us.
So on the curriculum management plan, that's our, that's our analysis and evaluation period this year is to come together as a curriculum advisory committee, look at programmatic shifts that we would recommend to the board. The wrinkle is this, so there's been an update. There's been a great deal of pushback from all of the districts in the state of Connecticut on the Right to Read Act. And this notion that we have to choose one of the programs that the state has mandated. Superintendents have come out saying they're not going to do it, their district's not going to do it. Groups of superintendent areas and Dr. Jones can talk more about this than I can. But there's a, there is a great deal of dissatisfaction in the state telling us what they think is best for our learners. The state released a list on Thursday evening and already the state is making changes. Dr. Jones, did you want to just talk about some of the changes the state has already relented?
Yeah, really within 24 hours, they're already sitting down at the table with the cave in caps because pretty much the entire state was like, this is not going to work. If you look at a district like us, the message that was kind of coming forward by the programs that they picked, like we'd be tossing foundations out, going and investing another million dollars to roll out curriculum when replacing things that we don't feel like we need to replace. And so there were only 12 districts in the state of Connecticut that were using one of those programs. Was it 12 or 15?
12 out of 122.
So, so they've really pretty much said now they're going to come back, they're going to allow waivers. We'll probably have a lot of paperwork to do because it was legislated.